Well, good morning, everyone. County attorney is en route. Probably be here momentarily. At this time, I'll call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners' public hearing to order on this August the 8th, 2023. And just glad to have you with us today to maybe talk budget a little bit. And if any of y'all have some ideas you'd like to share with us, this is your opportunity. So the new business, as we began, is the public hearing. And I will open the public hearing. And I was going to have Mr. Phillips, our attorney, kind of give you a basis and a purpose of what the public hearing's all about. So we may pause when he gets here. But first, I'm going to call our financial director, Tabitha Pollard, to the podium. And she's got a lot of experience and can help all of us understand what this whole tax cycle is about. So Tabitha, thank you for presenting this morning.
So this is the third of three required public hearings with an adoption this afternoon. What we wanted to do is to, or what we're required to do, is go through and we want to demonstrate kind of what we're proposing, what this public hearing is about, and then maybe talk a little bit about how we got there, why it's necessary, and then give the public the opportunity to express opinions or concerns. So first, our budget process, to get to the tax rate, we first have to determine what our budget is. So that process starts around February, March. All the departments prepare their budgets. They look at previous years. And we're continuously looking for ways to reduce operations costs as much as we can to try to bring, to try to provide the service as efficiently and effectively as we can. Once that budget is prepared, we forecast all the revenues. So we go through our revenues, forecast our sales tax revenues, our title of alarm tax revenues, our fines and fees, our revenues that we're going to receive from operations, and determine exactly what those are, what we're allowed to collect. And then we set the millage rate based on the property taxes. So the valuation is usually presented to us around June 1st, and we evaluate what we need that millage rate to be in order to be able to fund the budget as we have and provide the services that are required. So the property tax collection, calculation, how is your, how is the calculation determined? You take your property assessment, and everybody around May 27th received a property assessment valuation. That's what the value was as of January 1st. Most had, well, I'm not going to say most, I don't know. Overall, we had an increase for the total value of those valuations. Then you minus your exemptions that are allocable to each property. So your homestead exemptions, age exemptions, there are a variety through the tax assessor's office. Then you multiply that by your millage rate. That's what we're here today to do, is to set that millage rate. And the millage rate is the levy and meals established by the governing authority for purposes of financing in whole or in part the taxing jurisdiction's expenses for its fiscal year. So that sums up what we're, we've planned our budget, we've estimated our revenues, and now we're setting the millage rate to complete that budget process. In '99, the Taxpayer Bill of Rights was passed, and that requires that if you have, I'm not going to read all of this, but if you have an increase in those property assessments or your valuations, then you, overall, as a county as a whole, so they're all combined, if that increase, if that is an increase, we're required to reduce the millage rate by a comparable amount or advertise a tax increase. So that's what's getting us here today, is that there was, there was an increase in the valuation. There is no increase in the millage rate, no proposed increase in the millage rate, but to leave that millage rate alone by Taxpayer Bill of Rights constitutes a tax increase. And we're required to have three public hearings. So we have this, this notice of property tax increase that went out in the mail, didn't go out of the mail, I apologize, assessments went out of the mail. The tax increase was advertised a couple of weeks ago for the increase. The overall increase to the digest was 17.91% increase. At the bottom, you'll see the 4.2, the last paragraph tells you that as a result of 4.22 millage rate, which is the same as the previous year, that you have an increase of .641 meals because you didn't roll it back to 3.579 to offset that increase in property valuations. So let's look at history and what we've done over the past, the past few years. In the 2009 timeframe, the digest was declining. We did not have the revenues to offset, so we had to increase the millage rate some to keep from, to keep that overall value from reducing. The public, for the most part during that time, the public was fine with that as long as you promised to decrease it when the values began to come back. So if you look at 2013, you'll see where those values began to come back, and that millage rate has declined ever since. There's been a couple of years, 2019 going into 2020, where it was 6.079 actually, and the rate was left the same at 6.079. Other than that, there's been some declining revenues. So how did, how did, how were we able to do that when, and reduce that millage rate? And now we're saying that we need to leave that millage rate alone. I'm going to go over some of the expenses and some of the ways that those have increased through time. But we've had a rising sales tax. So we've had a lot of things that have happened in the economy that have resulted in increase in sales tax revenues, or your title of alarm tax, or there's been a lot of revenues that were improving substantially, and those are leveling off now. We're not seeing, they're leveling off and showing some form of decline. So you don't have that, that to absorb some of the cost differences. County by county comparisons. These are 2022 rates. Most counties around the state are doing the same process. So I don't know what their 2023s will be, but this is the way we, we stand in comparison to the 2022, which is substantially less the way I, according to what I see. Paulding has a 6.52. Now, the 6.52 is inclusive of the debt, I mean, not the debt, inclusive of the fire. And the reason that's included is because not everybody has fire tax district. And so to make them comparable from county to county, they have to be, I mean, you had to, you had to include fire to make it comparable to all the counties. So some of those counties have fire, some of them don't. But it's, what I'm showing you is covering the same funding sources for every county. So Paulding is at 6.52 and less than most of the counties, surrounding counties around you. Okay, so property tax breakdown. This is the way your property taxes break down. 69% of your property taxes that you submit in the fall are payable to the school. The 17% that's pulled out of this pie, that is what we are here to talk about today. So in a minute, I'm going to show you where the, what this increase has done to an average property of about $300,000. And it equates to about $67 increase. So the, this hearing is of, for that maintenance and operations, that piece of the pie, so 17% of the total 17% increase, if you can make that math work, but it's a small portion. The school, basically, they send a letter to you that says, "We need our millage rate to be this." And you're not given an option to do that. I think that has been challenged in the courts in the past. I'm sure we'll discuss that at a later date, but you're pretty, once they approve their millage rate, and they go through the same process, so they've had these same hearings. And then after they've done that, they adopt and what their millage rate should be, they send it to you because you're the tax levying authority in the county, but you're not given any option to, the courts doesn't give, does not allow you to, to change that. Okay, budget concerns. So inflation, labor market, population growth. So I wanted, I wanted to point out a couple of things here that I think help quantify what our, how our budget's changed. So in the first two hearings, we talked about how it's changed, you know, everybody can see it, you've, you, we've done it at home, we've made cuts, we've done this, done that. Well, I don't think it's on the same scale. So your household expenses have gone up, but the county's expensive, expenses have gone up in a similar way with higher numbers. So for instance, the cost of postage, the postage in 2020, because that's where we left it alone, we've declined our millage rate every year since then, but in 2020, postage was 55 cents. Today, postage is 63 cents. Our postage in 2020, mind you, that was a huge election year, was $500,000. The postage today with the increase is $566,000. If you go back to 2019, where we didn't have an election, the postage cost was $460,000. So that would be a $100,000 increase, just in postage. Now, you know, one might say, "Well, don't, don't mail, don't, you know, try to do everything electronic," and we do. But keep in mind, we're restricted by state law or federal law that gives us the process for, you know, for conducting some of these services, and it requires that we make these mailings, or that we send something certified, or that we, you have to have the signature. We're not really given an option to reduce that on all levels. Another one, the price of fuel that we were paying in 2020 was $1.56, and today, we're paying $3.22. So that equates back to the total cost of our fuel bill. And I just ran by the account numbers, just pulled the totals, just to, to give you something to compare to. In 2020, our fuel bill was right at $900,000. I don't think that's a good number either because that was a year that we were kind of shut down. So we didn't have a lot of, we, we had reduced some of our fuel. If you go back to 2019, that fuel bill was $1,159,000, and today, our fuel bill's $1,500,000. So it's, it's pretty substantial. Office supplies. Another one, vehicle maintenance. I mean, you know, the cost of a battery isn't the same as it was 2020. The cost of oil isn't the same as it was in 2020. We're seeing expenses, vehicle maintenance was $779,000, and today is 1.1 million. So those are just some of the expenses that quantify a little differently from your house on, on more of a county level. The other thing that we have battled and it's been, is the labor market. So the, I have worked in Paulding County for 26 years, and I think that I'm certain that we have more jobs on the board right now than I've ever seen. More vacancies, more turnover on the board than, than we have, than, than I've seen in my career. We have, public safety has been a challenge, and it's competitive. And so we don't get through, one, starting pay's not high enough, you've got to get, do something else. We try to make an adjustment, and somebody else is announcing that they're adjusting. So salaries have been very challenging. We have quite a few equipment operators that are vacant right now. We're having to contract those services because we can't, we don't have the people, we can't attract the people to fill them. Engineers, we've recently done some, some adjusting to that. The biggest one has, has been in public safety, but you know, we've, it's, we're filling it across the board. So that, that has been a substantial increase in cost, too. One of the other things that I wanted to put, and population growth, so we're serving a better, we're serving a larger population that's going to continue to grow, and, and the cost of, of serving that population continues to grow. So that's just touching on some of the things that we have, that we've battled with over the past, primarily during this one, but we've, we've absorbed these, and that's the point I really wanted to make, is that if you go back to that graph, we've decreased the millage rate over the past few years, but we have been able to find a way to either use revenue, other revenues that were growing, that were available to us, to assist in that. Now those are leveling off. We're not seeing those additional revenues coming our way, and so we're having to look back towards not increasing the millage rate, but leaving it alone to generate some additional So how do we spend the money? Where do the general funds go? As I talked about, we're, salaries has been a challenge. We have a lot of vacancies. We've got a lot of issues that we, it's, it's just very competitive. And so when we don't have the people to fill those positions, we're looking to provide those services, we've got to contract to be able to find those people or, and in public safety, we wind up in overtime quite often. And we have quite a few vacancies. We talked about some of the increases in our operations, our capital. Back in 20, 2009, during the recession, when we were trying to reduce, we kind of took capital out because that was the easiest way to do it. It was extremely expensive and difficult to catch up. And now we have some spacing issues that, I mean, if you take a look at that capital list, that it's growing maybe because we've put some of those things off in the past, or for the past few years. So maintenance and operations, we have, basically, our largest expense is public safety, second largest expense is public works. Another one that goes without saying that I think is very important for the public works piece is the cost of a lane, or of a mile of paving, so, or resurfacing. So in 2021, that cost was $282,000, to go back to give you some more numbers, and then in '23, that cost is $396,000 per lane mile. So it's, it's, that's some additional expenses that we're, that we're seeing. General government, that covers all of your ancillary departments, if you will, your information technology, your government buildings, your finance, your HR. Those are departments that touch everybody. To see the increase and what, a lot of times, this slide is to demonstrate that the assessment notices that were received in early June, late May, those assessment notices, and then you see this tax increase, and I think a lot of times, it's understood that that tax increase is on top of that assessment notice that you, that you received. It's not. The tax, what we're doing today is as a result of that tax notice that you received. So in 2022, if you had an average house of $300,000, that assessment notice you received, it was $350,000. The actual tax bill is going to be for the value of $350,000. So the estimated amount was estimated at 4.22 meals for $565.48, and the actual tax bill will be the same, $565.48, no change. We're not increasing the millage rate, it's just leaving it alone, and this is not in addition to that assessment notice increase. Okay, so what have we done to increase, to offset that increase? So this entire process wasn't taken lightly. So it wasn't taken, I don't want the public to think that each of you have taken this lightly because we've had quite a few discussions about, about the budget and what we could do to offset. So the debt service was at 1.6 meals, and we're reducing that to 1.2 meals. We have X amount of debt, and that's, well, it's $11 million in, in debt on an annual basis, that's principal and interest, and we've got to generate that. So it took 1.6 last year, it'll take 1.2 this year to generate that. And the fire, we had, and last year, we had a 2.5 with the growth in the digest. We have projected that we can reduce that millage rate to 2.3 from the 2.5. Homestead exemptions, last year, you had a homestead exemption of $2,000. This year, that went to $6,000, and next year, it goes to $10,000. So that will provide some savings to all properties that have the homestead exemption. The homestead tax relief grant, so Governor Kemp signed a homestead tax relief grant that will offset some of the property tax bill that a homestead property has around the state of Georgia. See if I'm missing anything on that. So to, to give an example of a tax bill and what the impact would be if you had a 2022 compared to 2023, your MNO, again, that's the piece that we're here today to discuss, is that $67.52. Your debt's going to have a reduction, and your fire has a small increase. Then if you consider, and then the school has, last year, their millage rate was 17.75. This year, they've proposed 17.675. Now, to mention now, as well as in the 10 o'clock meeting, that increase was as a reduction of your tax commission. So while the school board is reducing that millage rate, it's at your cost because you have in turn decreased the school tax collections portion, and so while they're seeing that decrease, they were willing to pass that along to the citizens. So, but ultimately, that's coming out of the county's budget, not the system's budget. Then you have a homestead tax credit on this particular house. The way that tax credit's going to calculate, it would be about 3.9411. And so overall, a tax difference between the 2023 and 2022 year would be about $50. Now, this is an estimate, this is for this particular situation, and everybody's going to be different. So we'd have to calculate each and every bill to know exactly what, what that savings or what that cost would be. So online is this presentation. There are several videos out there that the tax assessors have made. One's particular to the homestead tax relief grant that has the $400, the estimated $400 that is out there and available to all properties with tax, with homestead exemptions. And then there's FAQ out there, and we also have Q Public to view any information that you would need to see about your property and maybe what's going on around you. This is a sample of what you would see when you go to Q Public. So for each individual, if you're concerned or curious as to how your property taxes break down, if you pull up your, your property on the Q Public, you will see that how much of it goes to the school, how much of it's used for debt, how much of it's used for maintenance and operations, and then they do a little further breakdown. Mind you, this one's on last year, so we will short, we will have the current 2023s up in the next few months. But it kind of breaks down that 1427, so your total property tax bill was $4,015.11. The county government piece of that was $1,427, and it breaks that down as far as public safety, public works, and so that you can see where your property taxes go. That's all I have, unless I've raised any questions.
Good job again, Tabitha. Are you going to pass out the test, or do you want the marshal?
The marshal's, please.
Just kidding. We do have Mr. Phillips with us now, and he has done a good job in our previous meetings in just saying what the purpose of these meetings are and what they're not.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for my late arrival, but want to make this announcements about, announcement about what a public hearing is and what it's not. This is a public hearing. This is the opportunity for y'all, as members of the public, to come in and to present your opinions, thoughts, recommendations, and concerns on a particular item, in this case, what is styled as a proposed tax increase. What this is not, it is not a question and answer session. That is not what the General Assembly designed. What they designed is the opportunity for y'all to be heard by this Board of Commissioners. So the goal is, whatever your thoughts, concerns, opinions, and most importantly, recommendations, to come in here today and have the opportunity to present to these five elected officials up here so that they can hear what their citizens believe on these particular issues, and so that they can take that input, that, that public comment, and weigh that in how they ultimately make a decision on the vote that will ultimately come on this. So with that having been said, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. So at this time, the podium is open. You can proceed down the aisle and sign in and let us know your thoughts and concerns, and we'll be ready to listen to what those thoughts and concerns are. So who's going to be first? Thank you for being first, and there should be a tablet there to
Yes, sir.
to sign in and let us know who you are.
I am Tom Lloyd, and, I'm sorry, it's hard for me to do two things at once. I am Tom Lloyd, and I actually live in Cobb County, but I have a rental property in Paulding County. And the, I heard it from the school board last year that they've got all these extra students, but they're not getting an increase in, in taxes. But they are, their increase is through the increases in the, in the valuation of the properties. My taxes or my valuations, and I'm not, not here to discuss the valuation, so, but this just, the point that, that the county does, and the school board does get a raise, my taxes just this past year went up on four houses, $168,520. That's a lot of money, and that's a lot of taxes. So everybody, the, the school board and the county are getting raises through that. The problem I have is if, if they go up on the valuations, I mean, if they go up on the, the millage rate, they won't go back down. I know she said that, that they have gone down, but the, the increase in the values of the houses have been going up. So once, starting in November, I'm also a realtor, starting in November of last year, the prices started decreasing, in November, they went down 5%, and they've been decreasing ever since. So next year, So next year, what's going to happen? We're going to go up on taxes again by, through the millage rate. So we, we can't, we can't go up on the millage rate every single year because sooner or later it's going to get to 100% and then, then nobody will have their houses anymore. I've already talked to many tenants that, that call me. I've tried to keep my prices as low as possible. I've absorbed, past three years, I've absorbed the, the extra insurance, the maintenance costs, the extra county taxes. And they, they tell me that they can't afford any other place. Mine is the cheapest one, or should I say less expensive. And it's because they're, they're going up as the price of the county taxes and the school board taxes, everything else goes up. So pretty soon there's going to be a, a time and point where nobody will be able to live in Paulding County because it'd be too outpriced. The, that, my worth on the, these five houses or, yeah, four houses were 786,000. Now they're 953, 250. So y'all got a raise. It's just, nobody wants to admit that we got a raise. The way that I do a budget is I figure out what my expenses are and then figure out how I'm going to pay them with making the money that I make. I wish I had the, the, the opportunity to, to figure out what my budget is and then tell my employer, hey, this is what you're going to pay me. But I can't do that. And I just, I'm afraid you're going to drive a lot of people out of the county. A lot of rentals are going to be so expensive, people can't afford them. Do you have any questions? I take those as a no. Okay, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Tom. That's a good start. Who wants to come next? He's already been talking. Probably too long. Okay.
I'm Paul Duss.
Hello, everyone. My name's Nikki Lumpkin. I live, I've been a resident of Paulding County my entire life. I've always been of the opinion that the government, what they exceed at is taking wealth from individuals and transferring wealth. And I believe at the end of the day, the examples were, the example was about like a $90 per year increase in property taxes. And that may not seem like much, but I do believe that $90 in my pocket can create more wealth in the county and in other individuals' lives than $90 in the government's pocket. And, you know, I feel, I feel for the, sorry, don't say that. I feel for the county's increases in expenses, but, you know, as individuals and families, we're getting hit just as bad as the county. And, you know, the government's wealth stems from individuals' wealth. And we are having to make sacrifices and cuts. It was mentioned that sales tax has been going down. I think that's because people can't keep spending as much money as they used to be spending. All the government stimulus COVID relief funds are running out. And so we're having to make cuts, you know, to pay for that extra insurance, pay for electricity that's gone up like crazy. You know, we're getting hit left and right. We're having to make cuts. And I think that the answer isn't to tax more. The answer is to cut. And so as we are having to cut our expenses, I think our governments from the local county level to the state, to the federal, we all have to take the burden. The answer is not to keep spending more money. That's only going to keep inflation going up. We all, I mean, we all, we all paid, we all got to this problem and we all have to solve this problem by like taking the burden, you know? We're, I, I think about the future that my kids are going to have in this country. And you were talking about how property values have gone up like crazy. There's not really real wealth in people's pockets, you know? Maybe people got wealth when they were able to refinance and get a low mortgage, but just because your house is worth something, nobody can sell their home and then buy another, even like me, I'm kind of like house locked. I couldn't sell my house today because I wouldn't be able to afford a bigger home just because of how the payments are. So the wealth that is perceived right now with so far as like property values, it's not really real wealth. It's just inflation. We all have to do our part by cutting our, our budgets, cutting our, our personal expenses so that we can get out of this mess. So thank you all for y'all's, y'all's time. Let me finish filling it, filling in my info.
Thank you, Ms. Lumpkin. So we have, have had good sharing from two citizens or? And I'd like to have a third.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. My name's Fred Jones.
Can you sign in, please?
Yes. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak.
You're a veteran?
Yes, sir. You flew Raiders, Sky Raiders. I flew Hornets.
Okay. All right. First off, I'd like to start off by saying a few things that Paulding County's been extremely well at. All right. I, I, I'm in the IT industry, so I do a lot of comparison analytics. And Paul, for example, Paulding County Fire Department EMS response phenomenal compared to not just nationwide, other counties in Georgia alone. All right. Sheriff's Department, all right? Violent crime rate in Paulding County is levelled at 15.1 per thousand. All right? National average is 22.7, well below national average. And even if you look at Cobb County, Cobb County's 22.1. Okay? Paulding County currently has a very, very good tax rate. All right? Makes Paulding County very attractive to people. All right? Paulding County was one of the, was, was in, I'm sorry, but Atlanta in 2021 was one of the top 20 growing cities. And that was because of all the metro areas, Paulding County being one of those. All right? Still, Georgia is one of the top 20 most moved to states in the country. Okay? And that's all because of our fire, our police, our public services, and our good tax rates. Okay? So we have been growing, but that's beginning to slow. Now for the bad part. According to Realtor.com, median listing home price in Paulding County, Georgia was 382,000.4 in June of 2023. That is trending down 4.2% year over year. So we're starting to head down. Median home listing per square foot was $180. The median home sold price was 345,000. And currently there are 1,288 homes for sale. And that was just in June. Now Redfin has a little bit more recent numbers. Their, theirs are for July. The median sale price of a Paulding County home was 345, 354,000 last month. It's down 4.3 cents, down 4.3% since last year. So as you can see, we're the, we're, you know, going over the hill now. We're starting to drop down. All right? And I, the thing is, is we want to see Paulding County grow. I watched the previous board meetings for these public hearings online and I saw one of the members of the staff talk about buying Paulding County because the sales tax you pay goes to Paulding County. So we want to do that. We want to grow Paulding. All right? But if you increase the millage rates and it's, it's basically hitting the brakes, you're, you're going to actually, you know, start this downward trend is going to be much greater. All right? So with everything that's going on, all right? And, and by the way, property values in Paulding County, our appreciation, our appreciation rate is 15.27, which means property values are climbing at a pretty good rate. The U.S. national average is 8.27. So Paulding is a beautiful place to move to. And really, we really want to keep it that way. And if we keep it that way, we get the population moving in, the population growth causes increases in sales tax revenue. It'll cause increase in home purchases. So all those other tax revenues will come in through new sales, new purchases. That's if we can stop this downward trend. But an increase in millage rate is going to do nothing more than exasperate it. So, I mean, in my opinion, the thing is, is I think the millage rate increase would be a bad idea at this point. Well, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you for your service.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Okay, my name is Michael Torone. I'm a Paulding County resident, lived right here in Dallas for, let's see, nine years now.
Michael, would you state your last name again?
Yeah, Torone.
Torone.
T-O-R-R-O-N-E.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome. I'm actually a lender for mortgages and what I've seen is with the higher millage rate areas, it actually makes it even harder for people to afford to buy a home at this point because everything is based on what we call DTI, which is debt to income ratio. And that's factoring in your property payments, which is your principal and interest, taxes, homeowner's insurance, and then if there's an HOA. Now, when you start increasing millage rates, you start increasing their monthly payment, sometimes excessively. And with the higher interest rates, the way they are now, so many people have already been pushed out of the buying market. Now to add in more taxes on that, now you're putting their DTIs even higher where they just are pushed out of being able to buy or they're trying to find something that's a much lower price that, face it, are not in some of the best neighborhoods that a lot of these people don't want to live in. So they'll go even further out. You know, I see more and more people going up to Rome and out to Adairsville and, and those areas because the home prices are less, the taxes are more equivalent there, so they can actually still buy. Also, I think that raising the millage rate is wrong also because, I mean, Paulding approved an entire community of rental homes that are being built currently. You're going to get a lot more revenue out of those rentals. I mean, there's going to be several hundred homes that are all rental homes. They're paying the higher millage rates. They're not being able to get homestead exemptions at all. So you're, you guys are making more money there. And, you know, with all the investors that have bought up all these properties, they're also part of the reason why the property values have soared the way they have. They've artificially inflated the property values. I know this because I watch it. I see the hedge funds buying up all these properties that tends to hundreds of thousands more than what they're actually worth originally. In the thought that once the market did what it's doing now, they were going to be able to start renting these places at ridiculously high rents, which has also driven up the rental prices. It, it's just a vicious cycle that somebody needs to stop. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tor.
Hi, my name is Brenda Bell and we have lived here 31 years. And my husband just retired and we'd like to remain living here. But with the prices of taxes, along with everything else, it's just not possible to have social security and keep paying higher taxes, higher battery prices, higher food prices. We want to live here with our grandchildren, but like he said, we will have to move farther out because it'll just be cheaper. It's not our choice, it's just something we'll have to do. It's a shame. And there's houses everywhere. The schools are way overcrowded and they just keep building more houses. What about businesses that pay some of the taxes for us? That would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Some good thoughts. How about some more? Well, if no one else wants to come and make comments and allow us to hear those comments, I will close the, the public hearing at this time. There are a lot of issues in county government and of the five panelists up here, the five elected officials, I can promise you, if we were to go down the line and, and say what's the number one issue to all of us, everyone would say it's the budget. It's the budget, having the right budget, being able to have good firefighters and law enforcement and marshals and protections that are needed, the 911 calls that are responded to. From a previous, like Tabitha said, this is the third public hearing meeting. From the two previous, and I think Fred alluded to it, or Michael, no, it was Fred. What Commissioner Galloway said, which is important, and I would, if you'd be okay with saying again what your point was in those other meetings.
I assume you're talking about by Paulding? Yes. Okay. So, I mean, it, it pains us to go through this budget process and even though we are the lowest county of any county around, we would rather it be lower. I want it to be. Part of the way that everybody can help with that is by shopping here rather than other counties, eating out here rather than other counties. I'm not saying never go anywhere. I'm not saying never go anywhere. I'm just saying, when you have a choice, there's two ways that Paulding County can benefit from sales tax. One is if you buy within the county, and the other is, and I did not realize this until about a year ago, when you buy online, we actually get the sales tax in Paulding County from your online purchase, as long as you buy it from Paulding, have it shipped to Paulding. So that is a benefit to us. So if you're, if you need something and you can't find it in Paulding, see if you can find it online, and that way we get the taxes. We do our budget, just like someone said, and I'm not sure who, but where we look at what our expenses are, and then we have to figure out where the income's going to come from. If we have enough coming in from sales tax, that would help the property tax burden. So I guess the point of buying Paulding is, first of all, it helps people who do business here, and we want more business here, and that is our goal. And then also, it helps us to help the homeowners and property owners of Paulding County by keeping our property tax. We want our property tax to be the lowest around. We absolutely do. So thank you for helping in that regard.
The county attorney mentioned that, you know, this is at the time for Q and As, questions and answers, but several of the staff are here. Tabitha who presented, Scott Green, we've got our tax, chief tax appraiser in the room, and they'll be in the room after we adjourn if you'd like to have some one-on-one questions with them or come up and talk with one of us. We're not in any hurry to get out of here. But at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Kaker. I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, we stand adjourned.